Okay.
You still have like a broadcast?
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Renee, could we please have a roll?
Ms. Williford? Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Ms. Byrd?
Here.
Ms. Zink? Mr. Beck?
Here.
Ms. Ban?
Here.
Mr. Jablonski?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Does any member of the commission wish to remove any of the items from the consent docket? Does any member of the audience wish to remove any item from the consent docket? And if so, announce which items are being pulled to be discussed in their regular order. Okay, alright, well, I'm gonna go ahead and start the items here. Minutes, item one, consideration of approval rejection amendment and/or postponement of the minutes of the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one Regular Planning Commission meeting. Item number two, consideration of approval acceptance rejection amendment and/or postponement of P P dash two one two two dash seven, a preliminary plat submitted by Michael Roberts, Elysium, J W Dansby for Alpine Motorsports Edition for one point zero acres of property located at five twenty West Tecumseh Road. Item three, consideration of approval acceptance rejection amendment and/or postponement of P P dash two one two two dash eight, a preliminary plat submitted by Brian and Catherine Trent Cimarron for Trent Estates for twenty-five point three three acres of property generally located on the east side of ninety-sixth Avenue Northeast, approximately one mile north of East Robinson Street. And item number four, consideration of approval acceptance rejection amendment and/or postponement of Norman Rural Certificate of Survey, C O S dash two one two two dash seven, submitted by Joseph Fugate Pollard and Whitehead Surveying, Inc. for Denver Estates for thirty-nine point nine eight five acres of property generally located east of a hundred and eighth Avenue Southeast and approximately a quarter mile north of Lindsay Street with a variance to the minimum acreage requirement and a variance in the private road width to twelve feet. I would take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted and the motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. We're moving on to non-consent items. I see we have a pretty good size audi- If anybody would like to make a comment, we have some cards to fill out on the cart? The cart? And also, if you come up to speak, make sure that you actually say your name and your address. We're gonna give everybody three minutes of time to speak, so if you come up, I will start a timer. If you would like a warning that about thirty seconds before your time is up, please let me know at the beginning, otherwise, I'm gonna yield your full three minutes to you to allow you a chance to speak, okay? Alright, moving to the first non-consent item, number five, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and/or postponement of resolution number R dash two one two two dash six four Sanctuary Gardens and Wellness LLC requests amendment of the Norman two thousand and twenty-five land use and transportation plan from country residential designation to commercial designation for approximately five point nine nine acres of property located west of Oliphant Street, or I'm sorry, Oliphant Avenue between Alameda Drive and Alameda Street. Okay, I'm sorry, these are all three together. Also, item six, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O dash two one two two dash two two Sanctuary Gardens and Wellness LLC requests rezoning from R E Residential Estates Dwelling District to C R Rural Commercial District for approximately five point nine nine acres of property located west of Oliphant Avenue between Alameda Drive and Alameda Street. And item seven, consideration of approval acceptance rejection amendment and/or postponement of P P dash two one two two dash six, a preliminary plat submitted by Saffron Fletcher Sanctuary Gardens and Wellness LLC, N S E Engineering Consultants for Alameda Garden Center for approximately five point nine nine acres of property located west of Oliphant Avenue between Alameda Drive and Alameda Street. And I'll take the staff presentation.
Hello, Laura Hoggett with the City Planning Department. So we have an application from Sanctuary Gardens and Wellness LLC for a two thousand and twenty-five land use plan amendment from country residential to commercial. This is for almost six acres west of Oliphant, sorry, between Alameda Drive and Alameda Street. So it is currently country residential designation. They're proposing to go to commercial designation. It is mostly surrounded by country residential, which is the green, but there are a couple commercial designations around with one institutional to the northeast. They're also requesting a rezoning from R E Residential Estates to C R Rural Commercial and consideration of a preliminary plat for Alameda Garden Center. So it's currently zoned R E, which is also to the north and the south of the subject property. And then there's C R to the northeast, which is the Dollar General. And then to the east, there's T C Tourist Commercial, which is where Alameda Market is. This subject tract is currently vacant, and then mostly surrounded by residential. As I said, there's Dollar General and the Alameda Market to the east. Here's an aerial of the land as it is right now. So this is looking southwest towards the property, the subject property is on the south side there. And this is looking... Sorry, I can't remember which way I took the picture. West, again? Oh, west, but then looking north, sorry, my mic's up. And then here we have, over to the northeast is Dollar General and then the Alameda Market. And then this is on Alameda Street, on the south side of the property. And then this is looking directly south across Alameda Street. Here we have the preliminary plat. And here's the site plan, this is zoomed out with the whole property. And then this is zoomed in to kinda show where the actual development will be. So this applicant is proposing to have a plant nursery and a monarch weigh station. So they have some parking proposed here in the middle with a couple greenhouses and an office. There's also a detention pond by the parking. And we did receive one protest letter that accounts for seven point six percent of the notification area. Staff's available for questions and the applicant is here for questions as well.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Alright, we will take the applicant presentation.
They don't have a presentation.
We don't have a presentation, so I guess we don't have any questions for applicant. We'd like to move to audience comments.
They are here for questions if you have any.
I do have a question.
Okay, yeah.
Would the developer consider removing that drive to the south? The access drive and just having a single access off of Alameda Street?
We would, yes. We put that in based off of comments between the engineer and the city planning staff.
Okay.
So follow-up question for the city, then, is that drive necessary?
I'm Jamie Short, I'm the city traffic engineer. They have a right to put the driveway there if they want to. Whether or not it's necessary, I don't think that's an issue.
Okay.
As far as traffic and mobility goes.
Any other questions for the applicant or for staff? Moving to audience comments? I don't think that we have any. Any other planning commission discussion? Okay, seeing none, I would take a vote.
Well, I guess I have a question. We, the commissioner asked about whether the developer would be willing to leave that driveway out and if there's, I don't, myself see why that would be an issue. Did we get an affirmative on that? I mean, I'd like that defined before we vote on it.
Yeah, I was just looking at the necessity of it, to a dead-end street, considering the residential neighborhood that's behind there. I don't know how much that it would be used and whether or not it was actually necessary.
Well, it's not really a dead-end street, because obviously you've got, if you're going west, it links into Alameda, and if you go to the street, is that Oliphant? You can go that way, so, I mean, it's a dead end farther on down the road, which wouldn't make a difference as far as traffic.
I'm, is there any way we can pull the aerial back up?
But this is not a pud, it's gonna be zone commercial, so I don't, I don't think we can add restrictions like that, can we?
There is a preliminary plat included in the items that would be voted on?
What?
To the aerial image? Yeah, Alameda Street there on the west side.
Did you have any concerns with that drive, you think?
I don't, I just, you know, to be neighborly.
Any other discussion?
I have a concern if that drive is, or if that secondary exit is gone. I drive on Alameda a lot, actually, down there, my parents live near there. People drive pretty fast on Alameda, so if that's the only entrance and exit, are, will there be traffic concerns then with people coming and going? And then having cars entering and exiting? I think that, I mean, I don't know this for sure, but I do believe that people go to the lake a lot on Alameda, and it's a pretty, I personally drive really fast on it.
Uh, yeah, the speed, looking at the sight distance, that was more my concern when I looked at it, and there's not a sight distance issue. Also, it's far enough away from Oliphant Drive according to our engineering design criteria, so whether they turn at a drive or at Oliphant, it's basically the same.
Any other discussion? I would entertain a vote. Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
And now a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has, and the motion carried six to one.
Okay, moving to our next item, eight, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O dash two one two two dash two seven for Ben Vu To and Hong Loan Tai Dan. Request special use for medical marijuana processing tier three for property currently zoned C two general commercial district and located at twelve twenty-eight Lindsay Plaza Drive. And the staff report.
Hi, I'm Logan Hubbell with the Planning Department. We have an application from Ben Vu To and Hong Loan Tai Don for a special use for a tier three medical marijuana processor located at twelve twenty-eight Lindsay Plaza Drive. This site is zone C two general commercial. There we go. This site is zoned C two general commercial district and is zero point three acres in area. To the north is more C two, to the east and south and west is all C two. To the east, there's also some R M two low-density apartments, and to the south as well. And then to the west, there's a pud, the east village pud. The two thousand and twenty-five land use plan designation is commercial, and the surrounding land use for this site is generally commercial. There's some office and some, I have some office there to the north, and there's some, some medium, more medium-density residential to the southeast. This is an aerial photo of the site, currently a warehouse. Here it is, this is from Lindsay Plaza Drive. This is facing away from the site, across Lindsay Plaza Drive. This is north from in front of the site, and this is south from in front of the site. We received protests from, we received one protest from, that made up five point three percent of the notification area. And, oh, and staff forwards this request for special use and ordinance number twenty-one twenty-two dash twenty-seven for planning commission's consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
I have a question. It's come up before this question, and I can't remember if we ever got an answer. In the processing of marijuana, are there any, is there any off-gassing?
I, in, in, in some types, I believe there can be. I, what they are, and you may, you may want to ask the applicant about this, what exactly it is that they're wanting to do, but I, based on what they've told me, I don't believe there would be any with this, what they're doing.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'd move to the applicant presentation, if there is one. Did you have a presentation prepared? Any questions for the applicants? Anyone ask your question to them?
Yeah.
If you'll say your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Hong Loan Dan. My address is one two four zero four Rockwood Avenue. Should I say the facility or my home address?
Uh, your, your address, thank you.
One two four zero four Rockwood Avenue, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, seven three one seven zero.
Thank you.
So my question is about off-gassing from the processing of marijuana. What kind of off-gassing is there?
Off-gassing?
Well, I mean, is there odor?
I don't see there would be any odor, because we will have a can filter in our facility, which is like a humidifier, or it would be like a can filter, like really big, and so that will eliminate the odor. So I don't see there would be any odor floating around.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? I'd like to move to audience comments. Doesn't look like we have any for this one, at Planning Commission Discussion. Okay, alright, and seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And a vote, please.
You may vote. Everyone has voted and the motion carried four to three.
Moving to item number nine, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O dash two one two two dash two eight for twelve blocks high, request special use for medical marijuana processor. One of the specific uses permitted in the M one restricted industrial district for property currently zoned A two rural agricultural district and located at one three six two eight Crystal Brook Circle. Let me take the staff presentation.
We have an application from twelve blocks high for special use for one and only one of the specific uses permitted in the M one restricted industrial district for a tier three medical marijuana, for tier three medical marijuana processing located at one three six two eight Crystal Brook Circle. The site is zoned A two rural agricultural district and is approximately five acres in area. It is completely surrounded by other A two tracts. Currently, the land use is country, or the, the two thousand and twenty-five land use plan designation is country residential, and the surrounding land use is also entirely residential. Here's an aerial photograph of the map that shows, and this is from March, I believe, so it's, it would've changed a little bit since then, but these, the two buildings at the southeast corner are two that they're using for growing, I believe, and that you can also see on the site plan, and then they have the existing home there. The applicant has included some special conditions for approval, including a noise-blocking wall and road maintenance, so here you can, this is their, their exhibit for, for what they'll do for road work. And this is, this, this one shows the, the noise-blocking wall and, and also something else that was not included in their special conditions, but, but that they might, they might talk about with motion sensing lights. We received protests comprising eighty-three point nine percent of the notification area on this one. And staff forwards this request for special use and ordinance number twenty-one twenty-two dash twenty-eight for planning commission's consideration.
Thank you. Questions for the staff?
I apologize, I could not hear all of what you said. Can you please revert back to your description of the buildings on the site?
We, we're actually discussing the zoning on this item, so not the building, this is for a zoning discussion. For purposes of any questions we have, would you go ahead and pull that site plan back up, though, please?
Yeah, the, the aerial or the site plan?
I think it was towards the end, a couple more.
Yeah, this one?
Yes, I think that was the one. Does Planning Commission have any questions for staff? I have a question. Do we know how many of the areas around here have any other kind of special use or variances to the A two?
I'm not sure.
Everybody will have a chance to speak, but if we can please just for the moment have our discussion for Planning Commission to staff, and then everyone will have a chance to come up and speak their piece, so.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Okay. So we, all of these are A two, none of these have had any variances anywhere around them up to date? Any other questions for staff? Okay, I'd take the applicant's presentation.
Hi there. My name is Leah Astelos. I'm at two seven five one twenty-fourth Avenue Northwest, apartment four thirty-eight in Norman, and this is, if you come in.
I'm Craig Deister. Two seven five one twenty-fourth Avenue Northwest, Norman, Oklahoma.
I'm Craig Deister, um, two seven five one twenty-fourth Avenue Northwest, Norman, Oklahoma.
Um, so the the first, the item that we're proposing, we're a grow operation and the grow is permitted onsite. We're just um asking for permission to build another building that would be processing. Um, the processing facility would be a solventless lab, so we wouldn't use um the processing lab will utilize a solventless cannabis extraction process. And basically, it's an ice water extraction technique um that's used to mechanically separate the trichomes and the cannabis from the plant to produce an ice water hash. Um, the ice water hash is then subject to heat and pressure to convert it into a cured hash rosin and live rosin of various consistencies. So basically, it's just like you put the cannabis in a bag with some and with some ice and some water and it just kind of extracts like the rosin, like the I don't I don't know a lot about this, but like it extracts the material that then you put into a like like you put it into a freeze dryer and it freezes the material. And then it goes into um a rosin press that just kind of presses the material, so there are absolutely no chemicals involved in it. The rosin we create will um then either be sold as rosin or made into edibles before being sold to dispensaries. So basically, the steps is that you just wash the product, um you freeze it in a freeze dryer. Um, and then you press it and then you add um and then it just produces the rosin. Um, the equipment that's needed for it is just kind of like it's a washing machine for bubble hash, so it's just a little tiny machine that kind of just agitates it in there.
Would you mind just speaking up a little bit?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Microphone, so everyone can hear too.
Sorry, so the only the item, the equipment that's needed is like a washing machine for the bubble hash. Um, a rosin press um that kind of presses the material when it comes out and just like kind of squeezes out the the rosin from it. Um, a a freeze dryer that freezes the cannabis. So just some bags, some temperature gazes, an ice machine. We do use RO water. And the processing, oops, sorry, got too far ahead of myself. The processing of washing the bubble hash will produce um organic mulch and the water byproduct has no contaminants except for plant material as the THC has been removed through the washing process. Um, some of the community concerns that we've um heard, um they were um about noise pollution. Um, this building wouldn't produce any um additional noise. Right now, we have the grows on the um facility on the property and I think that um the air conditioning units have um been of concern to some of the neighbors. So we had um been looking at some sound absorption material to put around the air conditioning units to kind of call squat like help the noise in that area. Um, but again, that's like has to do with the grow and not the the special use permit, because this building wouldn't need the air conditioning requirements of all the other buildings that are on our property. Um, light pollution and ecological concerns were um another concern of the neighbors, so we we propose putting up motion sensor lights on the grow building so that they only went on if somebody came into the area instead of having them be on all night. Um, and then they talked about air quality impact. We have um some Remy Halo air purification systems inside of all our mechanical ducts. And that tests show that it reduces eighty-five percent of odor reductions from the cannabis. Has man um waste management. We don't use any hazardous materials in our processing facility. And then uh we recently asked the DEQ to come out um and do a site on a look at our site. Um, and per Alexander Graves, um she's an environmental program specialist with the DEQ. And she visited our site on December sixth and um she said that within the grow, our drip head irrigation method utilizes minimal water consumption and there's no danger of harming the wells. I think that was another concern of the area. Um, she indicated that our proximity to Lake Thunderbird would make it impossible for our water consumption to deplete the well in that area. And this is from a DEQ representative. Community concerns, there are no, again, like no hazardous chemicals, um completely organic. Um, our building and property have been inspected by the city of Norman and found to be in compliance with all city ordinances. Traffic flow, I think the traffic coming down the street was a concern to some of the neighbors. So we we're willing to purchase like AB three fill to fill the potholes and anything that's caused by the additional traffic um from our grow. Right now, we have ten employees um on the growth site. Um, and then we will assist in maintaining the road um as needed. Um, criminal activity, I guess, was a concern. Um, we utilize LCOM security to monitor our monitor our property. So we have multiple cameras onsite and we're in the process of installing, it's called a video guardhouse, that once we leave the property for the night, there's it's constantly monitored and if anybody comes near like the front gate or on property, somebody sees that person, speaks down to them and says, hey, you're like you in the blue shirt with the red hat, I can see you, you're not supposed to be here. Kind of to prevent any kind of criminal activity before it happens, instead of like try to figure out how to resolve a problem after the fact. Um, and then finally, um, I think people were worried about their property values. Um, OG and E installed a three-phase power to assist in our grow operations. And just having that three phase in that in that area, I think increases everybody's property values um as opposed to having us decrease them. Do you have anything to add?
That's that's it, no.
Any questions?
Okay, any questions for the applicant?
I have a real quick question. Um, you talked about we go back to the smell and when you're processing. And you you agree that there is something kicks off, uh it does kick off a smell when you do the processing of 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 the marijuana, correct?
No, I really, I mean, I don't think so. Like, I mean, we were processing the um the bubble hash the other day. And and it's like not any, it's probably less smell than like the grows, I would say, because I mean, the grows, I mean, I have I mean, they're they're marijuana plants and so the processing, it's it's all like, go ahead, sorry, yeah, this is Wayne, he's a
I'm the processor, actually. My name's Wayne Hinson, uh thirty-one oh two Southeast Thirty-Fourth in Norman. Basically, the processing lab is not going to produce anything and that's the way, as far as smell, that you'd be able to smell anywhere outside the building. We use carbon filtration for everything that the ozone generators don't actually eliminate as far as smell. So we're pretty confident that you won't be able to smell cannabis either from the grow or the processing facility that we'll have.
Okay, so you you do have a car carbon filtration system?
Yes, sir.
Along with the system that you proposed in your in your
Yes, sir, including it's a UV sterilization line, basically, that you put in the HVAC systems or anywhere in the room. And when it runs, it sterilizes uh the air from molds, mildews, also reduces the smell considerably, so. Charcoal filters would basically be in in place as scrubbing the air inside the buildings, so that way it always remains clean and free of smell.
Have you had any, um, do you have any test data or existing research data on the the effluent that you have from the process that's coming out? You said that it, there's no THC in that, but is THC not water soluble?
It is not water soluble per se. Most people do solvent extractions where they use chemicals basically to strip the uh cannabinoids off the plant. But what we do is just agitate it basically with ice and water. We run it through the wash several times and the final product that comes out basically is uh on one side, it's just the cannabinoids, the other side, it's just basically just the vegetative material.
So you're saying that THC is not water soluble, to be clear?
It's, yes, correct. It's it's soluble to an extent, depending on if you apply heat. But we do an ice water bath technique, so we try and keep it as cold as possible.
But I just have another quick question.
Okay.
Um, are you using well water for this?
Uh, we're using well water, but we'll fit, we're doing several stages of filtration before it actually hits the lab.
And how um how much are you using? Do you know how many gallons?
For the processing lab, it's not going to be more. It would probably be on the on the most on a typical day, maybe about fifty to a hundred gallons tops.
Are you sure?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We have one machine right now.
This is for the pro, he's speaking just of the processing lab, not the grow. But but the lady from the DEQ that came out said that the what the the drip head technique that we're using uses less water than um the grow, the any of the grows that she's seen around, and so she was very happy with the with the technique that we were using.
She actually made the statement that we were her favorite grow that she's seen so far because of our ability to restrict water usage.
Do you also own the lot to the west?
Yes, lot six, block six.
And there was, you had a very high number of protests in your area, I'm sure you saw.
Our neighbors indicated that they were not happy that we got the city involved in this process and that they wanted us to do it without having the city involved, which unfortunately with the OMMA.
I think, I think we
I can tell you that Tex came to us and specifically said that to us, that that they did not, that our neighbors were upset that the city was involved. And if you want to ask Tex if he said that to us or not, I'm sure he will let you know. He also threatened us with guns.
Staying on to the planning topic, so the lot across the street that was not in the protest, do you have any ownership interest on that?
A lot across this
There were, I mean, on the map and we have the protest map, we could probably flip to. I just wanted to verify of those lots. If you had any ownership in the ones that didn't protest. And have your neighbors expressed to you any concerns on your current grow operation about smell?
Um, I think that they were, you'd have to ask them. But we do have, I mean, I I can't, when I'm in the grow, I can't smell it and my daughter's extremely allergic, like when she smells like marijuana, she she gets a headache, so when she's in a in the grow, she can't smell it at all because of the filtration and everything that's in there.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I'd like to move to audience comments, thank you. I've got some sheets here, so I'm going to call you up one at a time to come speak and then just a reminder again, I'm going to give everybody three minutes of time. I will tell you that time does feel to go very fast. So I apologize, it just for sake of hearing everybody, it will seem to go fast. If you would like a thirty second heads up when your time is coming up, I will give that to you. Otherwise, I'll just thank you for your time at the end of the three minutes and let you have the full time to speak, so. Coming to Melvin Kozler at one three four zero zero Norris Circle, Norman. And just say your name and address, even though I just said it also when you come up, please.
What happened to you? Don't start the clock till I get done.
Nope, we're good.
All right, Mel Kozler, one three four zero zero Norris Circle, Norman, Oklahoma, seven three zero two six. I'm relatively new to the Pride Five subdivision. I've owned for a year and a half, just built a house there. I appreciate the residential nature, agriculture is fine. Uh, I'm atop a high elevation. I can hear the operation from where I'm at. I think expansion of the operation would contribute to more noise pollution. Uh, I don't personally experience any light pollution. I am familiar with grow facilities and they do emit smells. And even if there are measures put in place, who's to say that those things will be maintained properly? And what I'm hearing here is a minimalization of the scope of the operation as if it's a small lab with a glass and a baggie of ice. But there's five acres and I'm sure the company will want to expand. And with expansion comes more risk for impact to the surrounding area. There's no compelling reason to change the zoning in the area, especially uh given the um basically pushback that you've got from the neighbors. Some of the immediate neighbors are most significantly impacted. But there's a reason that zoning exists and it's it, you have to look at this thing in the broader context. Why do we zone commercial? So that we can put all the commercial activities in one area that affect all of the things that we want to maintain for our quality of life and for our investment. I'm in a, I'm in retirement now. I want to live peacefully in the area that I chose. And I do not want the zone changed to commercial or industrial or anything else. I want it to be exactly what it is now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving to Warren Jordan, Warren K. Jordan. And when you come up, if you will say your name and address and I'm trying to do it also, but if you'll try to lean forward or speak into the microphone, we can hear you.
Okay, my name is Warren Jordan. I go by Tex as referred to in one of the previous speakers.
And your address, please.
Thirteen three twenty-four Crystal Brook Circle, Norman, Oklahoma, seven three zero two six. The main thing is, I was mentioned earlier in one of the briefings that uh what I had said was kind of mistaken out of context. I told them that they should, before they submit to the city of Norman, to brief the neighbors on what they want to do. And and any delay might cause a turn down on on their application. And apparently, they didn't do that. They didn't think it was needed. But let me give you a little history on the neighborhood. There's there's a plat that shows Pride Five. That is a separate neighborhood, just like Brookhaven or some of the others in Norman. In nineteen sixty-one, quick, I'll try to make it as quick as possible. Nineteen sixty-one, the city of Norman decided to acquire some of the land around the lake to protect the water rights for the city. In nineteen seventies, they developed the land around it and most of the areas were developed and surveyed and platted as five acre plots within the the surveys. The, if you look at the the attached plat on this, it shows that. Reason being during the nineteen seventies, the favorite thing for people that didn't want to live in the city but want to be close enough to go to work and stuff was hobby farms. And they were zoned to agricultural too, so people could raise horses or goats or whatever on land and have small plots to grow their vegetables. It was never zoned for a commercial use. The uh photographs that was submitted to the city on the documentation package that we submitted shows aerial photographs of before and after what has happened to that plot of land. They've literally stripped it off. Their plan right now is for twenty-five thousand square feet of grow and processing space on a five acre plot. The air conditioners, the person next door, are bending directly toward her bedroom window. She's a nurse, has to work nights and sleep during the day. And the noise is just outrageous and not only noise, but all the other things, right? This week, they've been moving dirt around. There's a constant beep of heavy equipment all day long. The traffic on the road is ridiculous, the amount of traffic that's going. The neighbors, not just on Crystal Brook, but the neighbors on Norris Circle and uh M Hoff are also affected by it. The entire block that's listed as plat five or or with the city of Norman is affected by this. The city didn't make their zone far enough because some people have uh driveways.
Mr. Jordan, thank you so much for your comments. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm going to move to Jackie Cole. And if you'd like a thirty second warning, let me know, otherwise I'll yield the full time to you.
I'm Jackie Cole. I live at thirteen five oh eight Crystal Brook Circle. I am the neighbor directly to the west of this ten acres. And I will say that this plat of ten acres smacks in the middle of Pride Five. And everybody who lives in that addition has lost significant value in their property value. Nobody wants to move in next to an industrial complex. They have developed a compound and there's plans to develop the adjacent empty land on the other side of this fence. So they actually have ten acres that they want to develop. And they're currently working on this itty bitty five for their zoning. This company has changed its names five times since it moved in a year and a half ago or two years ago. If OMMA takes ninety days to process for a license, who's to say that twelve blocks high currently has a license since they've only been twelve blocks high for the last ninety days? Or or for the last four months or last ninety days. I don't know when that name came into effect. So I find it very hard to believe that anything they say that they're going to do or they're promising to do for the neighbors, I find it very highly unlikely. The traffic on the road, we live sixteen miles out of town. And there's a car that will leave, will come in and leave five minutes later. This goes on all day long, all month long. I just happen to have had long. I just happen to have had cameras installed furthering security systems, and it just happened, picked up traffic on the road. So if we live 16 miles out of town, and it's doubtful that their license is actually valid, what the hell are they doing? So, anyway, the City of Norman has an obligation to this residential area. We have been there the longest, established over, what, since '92? It is a peaceful residential area. And the people that are moved in are of criminal nature, and are a threat to our community. And I implore you to vote no against this special purpose use, because they're not only going to process their own weed, they're going to drag in weed from everywhere else. And that's not something we need. We don't need that. They can go set up their commercial entity somewhere else in a commercial zone. So I ask you to vote no on this special purpose use until they can find someplace else to process their weed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving to Stephanie Deloney.
Okay. My name's Stephanie Deloney. I live at 13712 Crystal Brook Circle, which is the property immediately to the east of them, our fence lines share. My house is about 100 to 150 feet from all these barns, the backs of all these barns with their air movers. And believe me, you can smell the pot growing. I know what pot smells like. Spring of 2015, I bought the home, little piece of property, East Norman, out by Lake Thunderbird. It was beautiful rural communities, five 10-acre lots with homes, surrounded green trees, rolling green pastures, lots of wildlife, deer, turkey, road runners, quiet, peaceful, birds singing, zillions of stars that you can see at night that you just can't see in the city. It was my cozy hideaway to relax, raise my livestock, ride my horse on the nearby equestrian trails, decompress from my stressful job as an RN. Next door, their property now, was an equestrian ranch. What was a quiet community has been ruined now due to the underhanded tactics of the people that moved in next door a couple of years ago. My quality of life, my animals' quality of life, as well as the rest of the community, our serenity has been destroyed by these neighbors with their noise, their smells, their lights, their traffic, their industrial commercial marijuana compound, with plans to expand it much larger. Their plans include row or rows of large 5,000-square-foot commercial barns, five planned at this time, with two already in place, multiple noisy, loud, 450-ton industrial air movers on the backs of these barns, multiple bright commercial security lights on each barn all night long, heavy equipment noise all day long, heavy traffic from many people coming up and down our road, commercial trucks coming and going. Our private resident-maintained road cannot handle this traffic. All of this roughly within 100 to 150 feet from my home, not my property, my home. It sounds like I'm an industrial part of the city. Property values will be destroyed with no recourse. Marijuana grows require massive water usage, and our wells, our aquifer, what if it runs dry? What will their grow processing pollute our water supply, the entire water table, affecting the entire area out here? It would be an emergency situation for all the residents in the area, as well as their livestock and animals, with no recourse. What recourse would we have once the sanctity of our hearth and home is destroyed, the values of our home properties, homes and properties destroyed? They said themselves at the last meeting that they are dumping their used grow water into the lower section of the five acres below the barns, what used to be the arena. All that land slopes down northeasterly, runs off into the bottom part of my pasture, then on into the next neighbor on the east side, into his property with his pond and his registered paint horses. All the chemicals, fertilizers, and that unconditioned wastewater could potentially harm my livestock, my cows, my horses, my goats, as well as his horses, potentially causing harm, lifelong debility, even death of the animal. Potentially, the entire water table could be negatively impacted. This entire situation has been bait and switch. They initially presented themselves as...
Ms. Deloney, I'm so sorry, that is your time. Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any other members of the audience that'd like to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to move to Planning Commission discussion.
I have a comment. It's Zone Day Two, and they're doing agriculture. And I appreciate that they want to, they want to process their materials on their agricultural land. But a question that came to my mind while listening to the audience comments is, there's a difference between processing your materials and processing someone else's materials. So this is a special use zoning. Are we able to control whether or not they process other people's materials? Can we restrict it to just processing their marijuana?
Might be a question for Jane.
I don't believe that we can, but I'm looking for City Legal to confirm that. I think that that would have to be something that would be done in a PUD, but through the special use, I do not believe that that could be controlled.
Right. Once it is changed in the zoning, whatever's appropriate in that zoning is allowed. So it would not be restricted just to their product unless they did a PUD.
Thank you.
In my mind, this is where you get into zoning something, agricultural, residential agriculture, agriculture, five-acre lots. At the time it was done, no one thought about marijuana growing. Obviously, to me, this is a confused and a restrictive and interference kind of use of agriculture that wants to expand into something that's commercial, that should never be, should never have been in this neighborhood. So I'm not going to vote for it.
Any other discussion?
I think it's really important to listen to the people in the neighborhood. And when you have a resounding 83% protest, I think it's really important to take that into account. I will also be voting no on this.
Any other comments? I just want to bring up that when we, the zoning change runs with the land. Special uses can be limited to owners. PUDs are specific uses on there, too. So when you make a zoning change, it can set precedence for things that can happen other ways, other places in the city. So I do think it's important that we don't set a precedent here that could be applied in another neighborhood similarly, that wasn't the right fit. I don't think the nature of this area is commercial either. I do appreciate that they were willing to improve the road, because I do think that the employees that are currently going out there in the additions, that would inevitably, essentially have to increase, that roadwork would add a lot more strain on there. But I don't think that that overcomes the overarching issue here. And the protest numbers probably would have been a lot higher had their subject tract included both of the properties that they owned, too. The percentage would have been higher, since they own that tract to the west. So I will also be voting no. Any other discussion? I would take a motion.
So moved.
Wait. Clarification. What was the motion?
The motion is to approve, but you can choose to vote yes or no. And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion failed, zero to seven.
Okay. Moving to our next item, the, do we vote all of these together?
Yes.
Okay. Does, for any reason, would anybody not like me to include items 10, 11, 12, or into one presentation?
Let's do it all.
Okay. Moving, Item 10, consideration of adoption/rejection amendment and/or postponement of Resolution Number R2122-57 for Norman Regional Health System. And the City of Norman requests amendment of the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan from institutional designation to mixed-use designation for approximately 29.3 acres of property generally located south of East Robinson Street, west of North Finley Avenue, north of East Frank Street, and east of North Porter Avenue. Item 11, consideration of adoption/rejection amendment and/or postponement of Ordinance Number O-2122-29 for Norman Regional Health System. And the City of Norman requests rezoning from R1 Single Family Dwelling District, C3 Intensive Commercial District, and O1 Office Institutional District to PUD. Planned unit development for approximately 29.3 acres of property generally located south of East Robinson Street, west of North Finley Avenue, north of East Frank Street, and east of North Porter Avenue. Item 12, consideration of approval/acceptance/rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP-2122-9, a preliminary plat submitted by Norman Regional Health System and the City of Norman, SMC Consulting Engineers PC for Norman Regional Health System Porter Campus. A planned unit development for approximately 29.3 acres of property generally located south of East Robinson Street, west of North Finley Avenue, north of East Frank Street, and east of North Porter Avenue. And Item 13, consideration of adoption/rejection amendment and/or postponement of Ordinance Number O-2122-30 for Norman Regional Health System. And the City of Norman requests vacation for closure of certain public interests in an alley, a portion of Ponca Avenue, and a portion of Griffin Avenue. Thank goodness for Norman Regional's pulmonologist, because that was a lot to read. Staff presentation?
Okay. So the first part of this application is a 2025 Land Use Plan Amendment from institutional to mixed-use. The subject tract is the big blue chunk here in the middle. It's currently institutional. Oh, jumping around, sorry. They're proposing a change to mixed-use. They're surrounded by commercial and office to the west and the north, and then low-density residential.
Residential to the east and south, sorry.
Okay. The second part is rezoning from R1, C3, and O1 to APD. And the third part, a preliminary plat for Norman Regional Health System Porter Campus. So currently zoned R1 mostly, with some O1 on the south and C3 there on the southwest corner and the northwest corner. So this is currently used by Norman Regional. It's surrounded by commercial, some medical offices, and then a single-family residential. Here we have an aerial. So I took some pictures of just some of the surrounding redevelopment. It was kind of hard to get the entire hospital just in one picture. So this is to the north. Across Robinson, it's a new senior living facility. This is Dimension School, which is just to the east, off Finley. This is also part of Dimensions. It's on the corner of Oliver and Finley. The Sonic is just to the south. They just demoed and totally rebuilt a new, cool-looking one. Let's see. This will be an HTO, like a tea restaurant. It's on Porter and Heim's. And then there in the background is a new strip mall that's on Moser and Porter. So we have had some redevelopment in the area. This is a copy of the preliminary plat. And then the preliminary site development plan. If I can get the pointer to work. So here we have what will remain, the hospital buildings, we're adding a new one here in the middle. Some mixed-use buildings that will have a residential component on the upper floors. Sorry, it's so small. And then down on the southeast corner will be the city's new senior wellness center. And then on the southwest side is the behavioral medicine, behavioral health. Sorry, some name changes. Okay. And then the last part of the application is a closure of some rights-of-way on Ponca and Griffin. So here's a site plan showing that. All right. And the applicant is here with the presentation, and staff is available for questions as well.
Any questions for staff?
I have a question. It's about the traffic study. I'm looking at it right now, and there's a paragraph that starts, "While no negative traffic impacts are anticipated", and then a couple sentences later, "This would cause the intersection to operate at an unacceptable level of service." Those seem at odds with each other.
I'll let Jamie answer that one for you. Also, I forgot to mention the Parks Board did meet today. They voted for Fee and Lou that will be assigned to the Francis Cape Park instead of a park on site. So, sorry, throw that in there.
Where's the Francis Cape Park?
That I actually don't know. It's on Carter.
Fee and Lou Park.
Sorry?
Okay. I'm Jamie Short. I'm the City Driving Engineer. The level of service is currently at a below unacceptable level now. With the addition of this redevelopment, there'll be an additional traffic, including the growth. And part of our request from the study, after it was done, was to determine, because initially, the study said to improve timing, but there were some restrictions that we didn't tell the consultant that did the study initially. So they went back and redid it. And in order to have an acceptable level of service at what we have now, we would have to adjust timing plus add an additional right-turn lane for the eastbound approach.
Is there room for a right-turn lane? I'm trying to picture it. They, I mean, they
There's going to be some right-of-way, and it's definitely going to be a project that will...
Can we pull the site plan up? Would that help while we're discussing it?
Do you have the site plan, or like an...
That one.
The one that shows the road going through there and the buildings. There you go.
That one, yeah.
And I'm, and this is only at Porter and Robinson signal. The impacts won't have be as detrimental at any of the other intersections.
But could you put a right-turn lane in at Porter and Robinson?
It would require a project and adding, buying right-of-way, and there are impact fees.
But they'd have to tear out buildings, wouldn't they?
Potentially, yeah.
Would...
But it's doable.
Yes.
Would all this happen before the project to redo that whole?
Well, the project is projected to be completed around 2030, is what the consultant used in their analysis. So this would be something that's like in 2030 timeframe.
I, sorry, I just want to make sure I have my ducks in a row and make sure I understand which part comes first. That we create the problem and then solve it, or preemptively?
There's already currently a problem there at that intersection. It's already functioning at a level of service that's below. So this is something that needs to be done currently.
Okay.
So the problem already exists.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'd take the applicant presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Sean Rieger, for representing the hospital in this matter. I wish you could see how much work goes into projects like this. Sometimes when we stand in front of you with truly large caliber projects, I wish you could see the years of planning and the meetings that happen every week, literally, because a lot goes into that, such as discussions of Commissioner Jablonski. So hopefully, you will catch a glimpse of that tonight. That's my hope. This has been a project that has been in making for a long time, and this is the last piece of it for the Norman Regional Health System. So we have multiple speakers. It is not a typo on your screen that the applicant is the Norman Regional Health System and the City of Norman, because the City of Norman is the applicant for the part of the project that will be the Senior Wellness Center. And Catherine Walker is... Kathryn Walker is here to discuss that piece of it. So there'll be three of us speaking to you. First will be Mr. Richie Split, the CEO of the hospital system. Then me, I'll take you through the boring mechanics of the zoning and plating, and then Kathryn will take you through the Senior Wellness Center and talk through that. So first, Mr. Richie Split to talk through the hospital vision that has brought us here tonight. Richie?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm grateful to be here, and my goal tonight is to walk you through what maybe all of you, but most of you enabled to happen in our health system and in our community with the project we know as Inspire Health. And with me tonight, we have Paula Price, our Vice President of Strategy and Growth, and then John Manfredo, our Chief Operations Officer as well. So we're grateful to be with you tonight. So just a quick review of who we are as a health system in our community. We are, listed on the screen, is our mission and vision statement, but our, part of our purpose and goal is to be the leader in health and wellness care in our community and in the region. And our mission and vision statement reflects that. This bold and transformational plan that we call Inspire Health is the outward reflection of that goal and that purpose. So just a quick note that we are a public trust, serving in the interest of the public and a political subdivision of the state of Oklahoma. We view ourselves as an anchor institution with significant payroll annually and the employment of nearly 4,000 healers or employees, nearly 4,000 healers in our organization, and more than 350 physicians on staff. So we're grateful to be here and to provide this really important service. And you see our volunteer trustees who help to govern our organization. So Inspire Health, I mentioned that. It is that bold and transformational plan that is so much more than these five construction projects that I'm going to go over with you. Those five construction projects represent $280 million of investment in our community, and it's a significant investment. It's transformative, and it is not only in, but it is for the improvement of health and wellness in our community. Those five projects, and again, Inspire Health is much larger than these five projects, but those projects include these that you see on the screen. So the HealthPlex expansion is the lion's share of that. It includes the ambulatory care center and a cancer center. We have a freestanding emergency department as well as the Porter Health Village that will include a behavioral health center and the Senior Wellness Center that is being brought forward by Norman Forward and the City of Norman. So you know our beloved HealthPlex. This is an image of that facility before construction began, beautiful facility, and we're going to expand it. Everything that you see on the screen in blue is existing today. Everything represented in purple is the new development, and we're more than doubling the size of the campus at the HealthPlex, including that finger-looking structure that is a parking garage. So looking from the eighth floor, this is what you would see. A few weeks ago, I took this picture. You can see a circle there that is representative of this patient access focus that we have where, like the airport, you can pick up, drop off in this circular drive area for convenience of access. The parking structure would actually be toward the middle of the screen, where you see that taller red mountain of dirt. And then this is what that rendering, the final product, will look like. Again, the pickup, drop-off for patients at the HealthPlex, parking structure you see on the left-hand side of the screen. This is looking out to the southeast from the eighth floor of our facility as well. If you looked at the horizon, roughly in the middle of the horizon, you would see the University of Oklahoma, just to give you an orientation here of what you're seeing. And it's also the excavation of the ground-level floor, the basement-level floor of all those projects, the ambulatory care center, the cancer center off to the right, the patient tower at the bottom of the screen that it also includes an emergency room, and the parking structure would be off-screen that you see there bottom left. This is a rendering of what that new patient tower looks like in the emergency room on the first floor. This is a view from our pond, that patient tower there, the angular structure you see, and a cancer center that has not been designed quite yet. This is the freestanding emergency department that we are building in southeast Norman off Highway 9 and 24th Avenue Southeast. This is that rendering, and we were most pleased to have our topping-off ceremony on the 11th day of November on Veterans Day, and it was a wonderful ceremony. And you can see that structure then, and you can see that structure of, you know, the image of that structure, this picture taken about two weeks ago. So progress is already being made, and we've furthered that progress. And it's hard to believe that we will take ownership. We'll walk into that building and start caring for our patients in about nine to 10 months. So making good progress there. And we're here tonight to talk about that Porter Health Village, and this is important that you understand, and I think you know that, we're building our future together. So the Porter Health Village really is bringing together a public-private investment in that site and creating this Health Village concept. So that includes the Wellness Center from Norman Forward as well as the Behavioral Health Center that we'll also talk about. This is a preliminary rendering of what that looks like. The upper-left corner of the that image, right where it says Porter Avenue, Brahms is up in that location, just to give you your bearings, and the southeast corner is where that Senior Wellness Center would be. And then next to that, the Adult Behavioral Health Center, 48 beds for adult behavioral health. And then potentially, our goal is to have variety care on the site as well. We have two structures that would remain in place, the Education Center as well as the Northwest Tower, and a future spot for growth and development that we would connect those two facilities. And then two possible structures for that commercial or the retail mixed-use development that you see, if you can see my mouse, right here. So again, preliminary rendering of our goal, and really, this is all about, Inspire Health is all about getting us all to a healthier place and transforming the way we deliver care and services and doing it very conveniently, very effectively, and really focusing on health and wellness and providing that sick care at the same time. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Sean Rieger.
All right. Thank you, Richie, very much. So tonight, we are here for, again, the mechanics of this particular site and the zoning and plating that will occur here. So let me take you through that. And Commissioner, I'll ask Mr. Todd Butler to come up here in just a little bit and talk a little bit more about the traffic and your question there, because I think we can give you a little bit of an answer on that. So this is the subject property, looking at the aerial. And what you're looking at is over 75 years of buildings and additions and remodels and improvements that have resulted in a lot of issues as far as plating. This has been a manual effort of the engineers to figure out how we're going to replat this, and the utilities involved, and the easements and the right-of-ways, and that's taken a huge amount of work to get us here tonight, and I'll show you a little bit of that. But the existing property you see on Porter, I think we're all very familiar with it. This is just a summary. We'll look at the site plan a little bit closer in just a moment, but a summary of what's in front of you tonight is, first and foremost, a memorandum of understanding was passed and adopted by the City Council in August of 2021, discussing the redevelopment of the Porter Campus. And so this campus was owned as a mixture of the City of Norman and the Norman Regional Health System. And it is not a very clear separation of ownership. It's sort of a menagerie of it. And so a memorandum of understanding was entered into between the two organizations as to how we would go about this, how we were going to redevelop this in terms of plating, zoning, use, payment of infrastructure cost, all of those things. And that was put forth into a document that has been adopted and is policy already. This is all bringing that forward. This vote tonight and the project is bringing that forward in conformity to that MOU that was passed back in August. That MOU said, of course, the zoning still has to come forward and go through that process, and that's what's here tonight. So the City of Norman and Norman Regional Health System are co-advocates for this development. They will, they started with different ownerships. They will end with different ownerships. I'll show you that in just a moment. And the proposed development requires, as staff told you, a rezoning because it was originally R1, which hospitals were a little bit like churches. R1 was a typical use. They had them many different places with special uses. And so we're rezoning the property. Norman 2025 is also being amended because it is institutional, and we're going to turn it into a mixed-use of possibilities. Preliminary plat will be, it will all be replatted so that we can clean up a lot of issues in terms of alleys and easements and utility service corridors. So all of it will be replatted. And then, because of that, it may come as a surprise, but this is what we see sometimes in older urban sites. There are actually still right-of-ways and easements running under some of these buildings right now, today. So we're going to vacate a number of easements and right-of-ways that probably should have been vacated long ago, but never would, not, I mean, never had, and not in unusual condition in old facilities such as this neighborhood. But we're going to clean all that up this time and take it all the way through District Court so that we clean up the site and get rid of what are basically antiquated easements and alleyways. So the existing is on the left, the aerial that you see. Again, if you can see what I'm talking about, so many additions and remodels, all of that complex, a wonderful complex that we've all been in many times. On the right is how it will be transformed. The only two buildings that will stay, as Mr. Split told you, was this, if you can see my pointer, that is the education wing right there, and that's got the curved front right off Johnson Street and Porter, and then the North Tower, which is where the existing emergency room is, right up here. This building in the middle is the one that will be a future building of Norman Regional growth in the middle of those two facilities. And then there will be a new road connecting all the way through from what is basically Johnson Street right here, coming through the site over to Finley over here. Now, this project will be done in phases. The lower right of this is the Senior Citizen Center, and the middle is the Behavioral Health, and the lower left is Variety Care. That basically lower section will be the first phase out, particularly the Senior Wellness Center will, of course, be the first thing out of the chute. And then the remainder of this at the top has to remain until the other facilities of Norman Regional are fully functional and in place. So we certainly can't do anything with that facility until Hospital on 9 and the HealthPlex are completely done with their transformations. And so that has to happen first before anything else will happen here. And so a little bit to your question, Commissioner Jablonsky, there will not be an immediacy of this all taking down and recreating in an immediate fashion. As to the uses, this is how it lays out. I misspoke a minute ago. I said the only buildings remaining were the North Tower and the Education Wing. There is one other building remaining. It's the emergency ambulance building. That's up on the north side of this site, the IMSTAT building right up here, just off of Brahms. I was actually asked the question today, is the Brahms remaining? We're not touching the Brahms, so it will stay in place. Somebody was concerned about it earlier today, and I assured them there will still be ice cream there as far as we know. So on the south-right corner there, bottom-right corner, is the Senior Wellness Center, and Kathryn will be up here in just a moment to talk through that. The Behavioral Health is right down here, and it will have access through the site to get to the rear part of the Senior Wellness Center. And then the Variety Care is planned for this site right here, right up on Porter, and that's part of the planning here. We're going to bring that building right up to Porter, just as we want in current planning, bring the buildings up to the streets. Though we have a walkable corridor on Porter, particularly as Porter is reexamined and rebuilt now into a new streetscape, we're going to bring that building up front. The existing education building right here, the new Norman Regional Building at some point in the future for growth, and the North Tower is right here. This parking lot essentially stays the same as you see out front here along Porter, and there's been some discussion to make sure that we can keep that parking lot the same. In terms of the right-of-way improvements that are happening on Porter, we're going to make sure that we can do those in compatibility. So the parking lot across Porter will remain, and that's the plan at this time. On the right side, we see the proposed mixed-use buildings. I want to make one correction from the aerial you saw, just, or the rendering you saw a few moments ago as the bird's-eye view. That was shown as like five-story buildings. These are not planned as that anymore because what basically happened is we added a new building just south of it. You see the proposed office building right here. And so these buildings got lowered to basically two-story buildings and not five-story buildings. So we took some density away from those and shifted them south. And so the mixed-use is the only area that mixed-use is sewn right there. Mixed-use could be residential. That's why we were in front of Parks Board earlier tonight, because there's a possibility that we could integrate some residential into this facility, into this site. That would be great if we can. There are no specific plans for that right now, but we wanted to make sure the use was there as an allowance. So that is in the PUD. As to the preliminary plat, this is a little bit of what I was talking about. If you could see underneath, it's kind of hard to see there, but there is a menagerie of easements and utility lines and alleyways and old lots, original town lots, all of it mixed throughout this whole thing. So we are basically going to wipe that slate and put in a new preliminary plat and a new final plat. Over about 29 acres, there'll be nine lots that accommodate all these different facilities, and this will all contain less impervious than the existing site, and which is really not hard to do. As you can imagine, this site is pretty much thoroughly covered with concrete and buildings, so we will have it less than that. The vacation of alleys and easements, I really won't go into detail. Staff doesn't have a presentation either, I don't think, but it's just some alleys and easements that are mixed throughout this site that need to be vacated. We're just simply never taken through that formal process, and we'll be doing that tonight through City Council. Let me go back one more. So in summary, there's no opposition expressed. We did have a pre-development meeting on this. We thought perhaps there'd be quite a few people showing up. We were surprised. We had just a handful of folks. One was a developer group that wanted to see what was happening. Another one was the gentleman building the new little strips center right across the street that I think is the T facility across the street. And I think there was one other person there that didn't speak, so I'm not sure why they were there. But that was it. That's all that showed up for this entire project at the pre-development. We've heard no negativity of any opposition or comments that has come through as a terms, in terms of this project. So Greenbelle Commission, we met at Greenbelle Commission as well. They forwarded it with no comments, and really, we're just thankful for the hospital, for all the work they've done for our community. That was their comment. And then staff has recommended approval of the preliminary plat and has given you reports as to the planning in full regard of that. So that's the summary of ours. I want to now turn it over to Kathryn to talk about the City Senior Wellness Center, and then we'll all be available for questions as you wish. Kathryn?
All right. This is my first time to be on this side of the podium representing an applicant, and certainly the first time I've been paired with Mr. Rieger representing a party. So I will say, when I started at the city in 2006, the senior center was a topic of discussion even then, and we are finally here to this point, so we're excited. I'll just go over this briefly. You can see the outside view of the senior center. I think this would be from Finley using the Art Deco style. You can see the layout here. It's really exciting, and I'll just tell you a little bit about it. 30,000 square feet of space. It will have a temperature-controlled saltwater pool, men's and women's changing rooms, a fitness classroom, three wellness exam rooms, admin space, a kitchen with a demo classroom kitchen, multi-use classroom space connected to an elevated stage, a wet and dry classroom area for art, a game room, a lobby area connected to the outdoor patio, a large fitness and workout space with machines, an indoor walking track, and we are in the process of taking to council a request for additional funding to design a indoor multi-use athletic center that would have a basketball gym, three pickleball courts, volleyball, that kind of thing. That's not funded for construction yet, but that is something that has been in the plan, and we hope to be able to add that on if bidding conditions are favorable. So we're really excited about this. You can see some interior shots here. And for those of you who might be interested in using this, who are like me, approaching the age of active adult, that would be 50, that is, that will be the minimum age to be able to use this facility.
Action adults, action.
Action adults, there you go. Adult Wellness Center is what we're thinking about calling it, rather than Senior Wellness Center when we get to the naming for that reason. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I was lucky to get to be the one to show the pretty pictures, but I'm happy to answer questions or defer to technical experts for some of the other issues.
Well, having been involved in that, I applaud this project. Just applaud.
Very exciting. Yeah. Thank you.
I'm sure, could I have our traffic engineer come up and answer, Commissioner Jablonsky's question a little bit further?
Sure, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. This is Todd Butler with Traffic Engineering Consultants, and he's worked extensively on the traffic aspect, so I wanted to make sure we answered.
Yeah, Todd Butler, Traffic Engineering Consultants, 6,000 Southwestern Oklahoma City. Regarding your question about Porter and Robinson, the need for a project there was determined by future traffic of the growth in the background as well as what is there today. What our original intent of the study was, was to determine a difference between the current site, the traffic developed, and accessing the current site versus the new site. And we found that there would be no appreciable difference between the two. But when we added growth of the background traffic, that was the decision for the need for improvements at Porter and Robinson. There's an existing problem there now.
Sure. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you.
I just want to say thank you to the design team and everybody that's kind of hooked into this and stayed there. It was, I can only imagine the utility nightmare and things that you guys have had to stay with and continue to push on to make this happen, but it's much appreciated.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? I have a couple. So, I am curious, I have a couple of quick questions on here. I know that there was some concern when we voted on the 24th and Highway Nine about the shift of services, and specifically, emergency services. So, it didn't look like there would be any emergency services. I know when that came in front of us, the discussion was that really, those would be too close to each other, and that you needed more distance to better serve the community. But can you just address, will there be any emergency services at this site? Because maybe somebody else might be interested to know.
So, the current plan is that we're still evaluating, is there an urgent care need that we could place on that site? We have a number of physicians who are currently there, but we will be closing the emergency room at the Porter Campus, but considering an urgent care use, if you will, in one of our buildings. The facility, the Southeast Norman Facility, as you appropriately stated, there is not an appreciable difference between getting from the Porter Campus today to the Healthplex versus getting from the Highway Nine location to the Healthplex. It's roughly the same travel time. So, having that access further east, the way we do, in that very quickly growing part of our community, actually expands our ability to provide convenient access. And being staffed by 24, you know, 24/7 by physicians at that location is just a higher level of service and care. So, to answer your question, no emergency room after the transformation is completed, there is that possibility for some urgent care on that site. The Mstat Building will remain in that location as well, to continue to serve the community quickly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A couple other questions. I saw there was going to be nine lots. At this point, is the intention for the hospital to continue to hold all nine lots? Or is it intended to sell some of those lots?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I believe that is the intention at this time, is to hold all nine of those. Let me get to the screen that would show you those. But yes, that's the intention, is to hold those nine lots at this time. Well, I say, I apologize. One of those nine is the City of Norman Senior Wellness. That would go to the city. Yes.
Thank you. And then, I have one other question regarding the 48 beds for the mental health. And Richie, you and I have had many conversations about this. I know, much earlier, years ago in the process, I believe it was Teri Reed, and you have to forgive me, I don't remember everybody's name as well, Teri White? Okay. With the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health Services. I may not have gotten that correct. At the time, she was talking about possibly shifting state beds into this facility, which I would much rather have seen additional beds, rather than a shift of services. So, I don't know if that's still part of the plan, and I'm sure you have had some discussion, but can you maybe talk about the addition of services and beds, or transfer of beds?
Sure. We currently provide behavioral health services for adults on our Porter Campus. We have 20 beds where we provide that service. It's a wonderful service and highly valued to our community and serves a great role in the community. This is adding 28 additional adult beds that are separate from what Griffin Memorial Hospital would offer. So, the shift of those beds that Teri White had once talked about, those considerations were definitely a part of this dialogue and the development of this campus. I can't speak for Teri, since she's transitioned, and Griffin has their plans that they're working on currently, and they do have a plan to expand services and beds for that hospital. It's not on that site. Those are 28 new beds that we're proposing for that Behavioral Health Center.
Thank you.
We'll keep our fingers crossed, because it's a tremendous need that we continue to add those services.
Yeah. And we can't control what the state does, but I would be in favor of seeing additional beds. Any other questions for the applicant? Or comments to the applicant? Okay. Moving forward, I'll move to audience comments, if there are any. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Oh, that's okay. You can just come up to the microphone and say your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes. And just speak into the microphone, if you don't mind.
Sure. Not a problem. My voice carries. My name is Rochelle Harden-Monas. I live at 2601-132nd Avenue, Southeast, 73026. I have concerns and hopes that there'll be additional beds, behavioral health beds. I'm a social worker. I've actually worked in social work in this community since 1983. And I've watched it shrink and, excuse me, go away for a lot of people. And we have a lot of homeless people in our community that have mental health issues, and they don't get addressed. So, I'm hoping that this facility will somehow begin to address some of those, not necessarily those needs, but I know we have a homeless committee, and we do this thing for the whole city. But we need to actually look at beds. The only other piece is, my understanding is that Red Rock currently has some contracted beds. Is that correct?
Not with us, but yes, with the state.
And it's, they're on the campus, though. They're on?
No, they ended that.
Okay. Thank you. I have had the experience that certain facilities, agencies end up with a lot of contracts. And the Mental Health Center here, quick history, I know my three minutes are almost up, darn, was the first mental health center. Well, Talafaro and this one were the first mental health centers, comprehensive mental health centers in the United States. That's how different we've become. And I sure hope that there'll be some focus and emphasis on providing quality and figure out a way to do it to help.
Thank you very much. Any planning commission discussion?
Just excited about this.
I'm excited for some money to be invested in here. I don't know if anybody knows how much it costs to demolish parts of a building, but it is to make land usable again, but it is not a small investment, and it is a lot more than finding a new piece of land somewhere. So, it's significant to reinvest into an already-developed area.
And I will say, after being part of the conversation for so long, the disappointment for having to cut the building down, to hear that the city is going after the funds seriously to expand basketball and pickleball courts, right now.
All right. Well, I would take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried seven to zero.
Okay. Moving on to our next item, number 14. I'm going to do these separately, or these separate, kind of separate issues on there for the ordinance. We'll do them separate.
You want them separate?
Let's do them separate. Okay. We're going to do 14, Consideration of Adoption Rejection Amendment and/or postponement of Resolution Number R2122-58, a resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, adopting the Historic Preservation Guidelines to be used by the Norman Historic District Commission in reviewing proposed additions, alterations, and demolitions to structures located in the historic districts. And staff presentation.
Good evening. Ani Star. I'm at the Planning Department, and I act as the Historic Preservation Officer for the City of Norman. And after more than 10 years of use, the Historic District Commission wanted to revise the Historic District Preservation Guidelines, as well as the Historic Preservation Handbook. So, I wanted to give you a little background. 1993, the Historic District Ordinance was adopted. It allowed for the creation of historic districts, allowed for the establishment of a commission, and allowed for the development of Historic Preservation Guidelines to regulate those districts. Well, hold on. This thing's touchy. Hold on. Hold on. Oh, sorry. Sorry. Going the wrong way. I'm too touchy. So, and in 1995, the first Chautauqua Historic District was established, along with a set of guidelines. And shortly after that, a couple of years later, the Miller Historic District was established. In 2007, the Commission undertook a major overhaul of the Historic Preservation Guidelines, for one, to combine the two sets of guidelines that they had, and to address some issues that needed to be addressed. And in December of 2008, they adopted a new set of revised guidelines. And in March of 2009, they incorporated those into a Historic Preservation Handbook, which was given to all residents of the Miller and Chautauqua Historic District. And since then, it's kind of been steady and the same. And then, in 2016, the Southridge Historic District asked to become a district, and that was established. And then, in 2018, the Chautauqua Historic District had College Avenue added between Boyd and Sim Street. And then, Southridge turned around and expanded to the west side of Klassen Boulevard. And just a little bit of a summary, let me make sure. Oh, sorry. Yes, that's right. My hands have got a trigger finger. Just a summary of some of the corrections to the Preservation Guidelines. Some errors, those were corrected, clarification of wording, addition of items that were missed, like solar panels, alternative materials. And then, one of the bigger things that was done was the addition of administrative bypass items, items that could be approved by staff, instead of going through the whole Historic District Commission review process. There's about 20 new ones that have been added. Those are ones that are primarily located in the rear yard with no or low visibility, and they include everything from accessory structures to swimming pools. And along with that, a set of standards were created for each one of these that were going to approve by administrative bypass. Some of the major revisions include accessory structures. They were divided into three sections. Those structures that are 400 square feet and less, structures that are greater than 400 were classified as secondary structures. Those include things like garage apartments and studios. We didn't have anything to address those kind of structures in the guidelines. And then, finally, of course, garages. There was materials that were added, sections added regarding materials that weren't covered before, stucco, metal, stone, and cement fiberboard. And then, windows and doors were clarified. They were actually divided, currently, they're in one section together. They're divided into two sections, and then, just made clear as to what you could and could not do. And then, also, the definition of what's considered deteriorated was added. Energy efficiency items, including solar panels and solar racks, was added and clarified as what you could and couldn't do. And then, another big revision is the garage section. That's always a hot topic, has been for 20 years and still is, but they've landed on 575 square feet, a maximum of two garages per parcel, and the allowance of cement fiberboard for garages with limited visibility. And there's been, you know, a public input process this whole time. You know, there were six Historic District Workshop Meetings, two public input meetings were held, July 19th and July 26th this year. There was about a half a dozen to a dozen people. Those comments were gathered at those meetings. The Historic District Commission reviewed and incorporated those public comments, and then, made a final adoption process on August 2nd of 2021. And then, finally, I wanted to note that some of you, well, really, I think, just Commissioner Beck, may be familiar with the Historic Preservation Handbook, which is beloved by many of the property owners in the district. Tonight's, tonight's, tonight's resolution is just to adopt the actual Historic Preservation Guidelines. Those guidelines will be incorporated into this Historic Preservation Handbook at a later time. And in doing so, it is anticipated that it will be reformatted to provide clear delineation between, you know, information and guidance on maintenance and things like that, as opposed to the standards and guidelines, which are actually regulatory and they must follow. So, with that, staff presents Resolution R2122-58 to Planning Commission for discussion and consideration. And, oops, let me go backwards. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for staff?
Nope. Just glad we're getting this done.
And the garage apartments, so I saw your garage, maximum of 575. And how does garage apartments, like if a garage, if it's mostly garage and it had like 300 square feet, for example, of living space, where does that fall into garage or the accessory building?
I think a garage apartment's going to be a secondary structure, and they're going to consider that. One of the issues we had is, we had one come up, a garage apartment come up, and we didn't really have any guidelines. And the Commission was trying to pull from garages, which is kind of one, you know, you know, animal, completely different than a garage apartment, which really needs to have some of the guidelines that you would require for a new infill structure, except in this case, it's not really an infill. It's a secondary structure to a primary structure. So, the guidelines are more in line with what you would see for a new primary structure, to do with exterior wall materials, windows, et cetera. So, there's less concern about, you know, the sizes. I mean, there's concerns with the size, but the focus is to make it designed to blend in with the neighborhood and be compatible with the historic structures in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right. That was our applicant presentation. So, any audience comments? Seeing none, Planning Commission discussion? And seeing none, motion?
Make a motion. Second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried seven to zero.
Moving to item 15, Consideration of Adoption Rejection Amendment and/or postponement of Ordinance Number O-2122-31, an Ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending Chapter 22 zoning ordinance, Article XI, that would be what, 11? Specific District Regulations, Section 429.3, and Definitions Deleting Conservation and Adding Original Period of Significance Relocation, Secretary of the Interior Standards of Historic Buildings, Edits for Consistency or Corrective Purposes, Added Written Denial Requirement, Added Seven-Day Notice, Extended Time Limit of COA from Six Months to Twelve Months, Restructured Exceptions to Administrative Bypass, and Providing for the Severability thereof. And the presentation on this, is it the same?
Yeah. It's very similar. It's very short. There's only one slide or two slides. Ani Star, with the Planning Department, and is a Historic Preservation Officer for the City of Norman. So, just a brief summary of the Historic District Ordinance. With the adoption of new Historic Preservation Guidelines, they must be reflected or incorporated into the ordinance in order to make them effective and be able to be enforced. So, that's part of the reason for the ordinance revisions. In addition to that, it provided an opportunity to correct some errors, align definitions between the ordinance and the guidelines so that there wasn't any conflict and so that they matched. And then, we also, as mentioned, as she just read off, restructured it to allow all of those administrative bypass items to be done by administrative bypass. Right now, it's a much smaller section, so that needed to be restructured. And then, we did, the Commission did suggest that we change the expiration from six months to 12 months. change the expiration from six months to 12 months. Right now, they only have six months to get started, especially with the supply chain demand issues going on. A lot of people just can't get started in six months, and then they have to come back and ask for a extension. So this just kind of cut out that extra paperwork. And then required, added the addition of requiring a seven-day notification to adjacent property owners. Right now, the code doesn't call for any set number of calendar days to send that out. So that is that. And with those revisions, the Historic District Commission recommended adoption of the revised Historic District Ordinance at their October 4th, 2021. And staff presents ordinance number 02122-31 to Planning Commission for Discussion and Consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have another question. Since the windows came up with the storms that came through recently, I remember this, I have a historic home, and I got the notice. And so the, replacing windows that the actual frame was broken out actually required a certificate of appropriateness.
Yes.
Is that now going to fall under administrative, where the city can take care of that without requiring residents to go in front of the Commission in order to replace a frame?
Yeah, it depends on the circumstances, but more than likely, yes. So you actually can, where we have an issue is when people want to replace all their windows in their house. That's going to go before the Commission still. It's when you maybe have one window that got broken out. I mean, who would have predicted a hailstorm like this? You'll be able to do that, if you're replacing it like-for-like, in kind, you'll be able to do that through the administrative bypass process, which is through staff. You still have an application to fill out. It's a much shorter process, you know, maybe a week to get that processed, as opposed to waiting for, you know, the next Historic District Commission meeting to come up.
Yeah, that's fantastic. I'm in favor of this.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Then will, we have any audience comments? Planning Commission discussion? And we'll take a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, moving to miscellaneous.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Moving to our miscellaneous comments for staff. Do you have any information for Commission?
So I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you guys for a year. It's been a good year. Yeah. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, happy new year. In January, we will be meeting in conference rooms C and D of Building A. They're getting ready to start some construction in this area. So for the January Planning Commission meeting, we'll be over there. I think you've been in there once or twice when we were doing construction, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. Right, it's in A, it's the Planning Department, and there's two conference rooms that are over there. And we'll open the wall up, and we can record and everything over there as well.
Okay.
Okay. Don't we, do we have to vote new officers in next meeting, too?
All right.
So we should probably.
Everybody be here.
If anybody would like to be president, let me know.
If you're not here, that's your.
That's your.
Exactly. If anybody has any interest in any of those positions, I guess you can get with me, or, you know, get with the ones, let somebody know to be recommended, and we'll vote in in January. Okay. Any other Commissioner comments?
Where's Home Creations' Christmas cookie jars?
Well, maybe.
They always deliver them to me the day after Planning Commission.
Oh.
So we'll send an email back.
That's, that's.
We've sent one.
Past several years.
Okay, okay. I can't eat them anyhow, because they got pistachios in them, so.
Well, I don't have any problem with pistachios.
Well, I'll give you mine.
Anything else to come before Commission? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Ooh. Merry Christmas to all.
Merry Christmas.